16, filing COVID, we attempted a conversion to a cloud-based program with the same company. It did not go well. That's, we'll leave it at that. We quickly converted back to our current program. And the company was gracious enough to allow us to utilize the software for the remainder of the year at no cost, remainder of 2022, at no cost. And at the beginning of 2023, we began paying the monthly maintenance fee again. A month-to-month program was not meant to be long-term. So the agreement before you is what I am seeking your approval for. This agreement provides for the following services. So of the $20,000 annual, 6,500 is for the county fusion software itself, 12,000 is for the Vanguard Cloud Search Program, and $1,500 is for the Property Alert Fraud Protection Program. And so that's a total of $20,000 a year for five years. The funding for this software would come out of the automation in the CPL fund, so it does not affect the general fund at all. I also provided you a little packet on the Property Fraud Alert Service that we have through the Register of Needs Office. We haven't promoted it a lot, but we're working on that. We're going to be sending a press release over to the Resorder as well to get that published, especially because I know our residents, I've received them myself, especially if you have any kind of a real estate transaction. They, some company automatically sends you something telling you, oh, we can get you a copy of your property records. And of course, they're charging you a fee way more than what the Register of Needs Office will charge you, because by statute, it's only a dollar a page. You get a copy of any of your documents that are recorded with the Register of Needs. So the Property Fraud Alert Program, just real quick, you can sign up for it and it will, any addresses that you have. So if you own multiple properties, anything, you'll get an alert if there's any property transactions filed with the Register of Needs Office regarding those properties. So this would be something to, for, you know, if we have elderly parents or things like that where you want to sign up to keep an eye on their addresses, because there are unfortunately, a lot of people who will take advantage of our elderly. So I can prepare a motion for you to approve this at the next meeting. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Number two, Eastern Michigan Council of Government update. Sue, Executive Director. Good morning. Make sure your mic's on. It'll show green light. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Catherine Metner, and I'm the Chair of the Ross Coman County Economic Development Corporation. This is Sue Fortune. She is the Executive Director for the East Michigan Council of Governments, also known as MCAG. They have been in the past and hopefully continue to be a great partner with economic development throughout our 14-county region. Sue is here to just kind of give you some information regarding MCAG. The county has supported MCAG in the past, and as you are moving into your budget process, we hope that you'll consider MCAG to continue with support. So. Sue, with that, well, thank you very much. It's been a number of years since I had a chance to come up. And in fact, I had to have a guide person to get me back to this spot, which was quite different than before. But the Regional Council is the federal economic development district for the 14 counties. We are hosted by the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development. Even though we are under contract to the state of Michigan, do a lot of other things for them on behalf of the counties. Certainly knowing Mark for many, many, many years, he was on our board for a long time. He was a great representative, so. Ross Coman has been a member since 1968, so I would certainly hope that you would continue. We do work cooperatively with MCAG, which I'm sure many of you are aware of, a sister region. And they're just, they're just great. And we work with the Economic Development Group, very, very much so. Brenda Batchelder comes to our meetings, Lachey comes to our meetings, and members of the RED team, which is the Regional Economic Development Team. And we have done a lot of good things. For the Department of Commerce, we are charged with developing what's called a comprehensive economic development strategy for the 14 counties. And that is on our website and available for your viewing at any time. It has to, it is a snapshot reflection of economic conditions throughout the region, all the way from Samhaila County to Ross County County. Biggest region in the state of Michigan. So your membership maintains your eligibility, apply for EDA money. And we work directly with the Economic Development Representative from the Department of Commerce. And it's been an interesting ride all of these years. It's resulted in over $100 million in just EDA projects this region over the years. Right now, I just wanted to bring you up to date on some of the things that we're working on. We are under contract to MDOT to do general highway contracting work with them. Has a lot of different components, including the Asset Management Program, which is the pavement assessment of your roadways. One of my staff does that. She's presently doing it throughout the region right now. How those roads condition, how they are, is fed back into MDOT to a formula and plays a role in how transportation funding is allocated throughout. It's been a fascinating project to be involved in to see how many roads have improved, and a lot of work done at the local level. How many haven't. It is just fascinating. We also work with the Rural Task Forces. In fact, my staff member gave me a little thingy before I left that showed a couple of projects underway for Ross Coman through the Rural Task Force, because he manages that program in the region. And we are, also have begun work on a regional housing plan as part of MISTHA's overall plan to have an eight-wide housing plan. Very ambitious goals. They basically told us at our meeting on Monday, they're flying the plane while they're building it. And I can attest to that. Just, pardon me while I digress. In that, the program was announced in January, it was launched in May, and the final report is supposed to be completed by the end of this month throughout the state. Is, well, you know, we're also going to be doing a coastal resiliency study plan for the Bay County, all the way around to the county. That should be very interesting because of the lake levels fluctuating so dramatically and with many storms, it's done a lot of that. So we also do local technical assistance, master plans, recreation plans, hazard mitigation plans. Did you hazard mitigation plan? When I left the office, Bill was trying to find out when your next update is due, and he couldn't get ahold of the emergency manager in Lansing, but he'll let you know, so, just so you have an option of what you want to do about that. We're also kind of getting our toe in the water on materials management. I know Jody sent a little thingy that you all have a meeting tomorrow on that. That's formerly known as solid waste. You know, so it's all new. So anyway, we are, we are kind of getting our, as I said, our toe wet in that. And basically responding to about a million things every day, I'm telling you, is incredibly busy, incredibly busy. So we do have a new Economic Development Program Manager. His name is Bill Ernott. He's been on staff for a long time. But he has wonderful economic development background, and Jane did retire. So lucky her. Anyway, I surely would hope you would consider staying with us. There's a lot of value to be, to be had from your membership. And as I have told people for a thousand years, if I don't know the answer to your question, I know someone who does know the answer. So that would conclude my remarks. If anyone had any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I see you staring there, Mark. Good to be seen. Good to be seen, Mark. Thank you. How is he? You tell him, please, please tell him. I'll be gone.
Haven't heard about Roy in years.
I haven't either. I did bring a couple of handouts. I'd be happy to leave them on the back desk if you would like to see, you know, on some of the programs there are. Trying to, oh, I know one of the things I did want to specifically mention to you. Michigan Department of Office of Rural Development. In the process of accepting letters of interest for capacity building, collaboration for rural communities. If you have an interest in that, please contact Bill at our office. Because EDA funding can be used to match that. And the other thing he wanted me to be sure to pass along is MSP is now accepting letters of intent for all FEMA applications. So if you have an interest in that, please let us know. If I could just make a comment too. I've been working in economic development for a lot of years and have been a member of MCAG for a lot of years and have been Chair of the RED team and whatnot. I have written a number of grants in other communities for USDA, EDA, whatever it may be. MCAG, for you, for EDA grants, it's very important to be a member because you get extra points on EDA grants for being a member. And Ross Coman County, in the economic development, in our economic development meetings, we talk often about missed opportunities for grants, and that is on our, that's part of our goals for the next few years, is to really research where we can apply for money for this county, for projects in this county. And EDA is, is one of those important unders. So it's, it is important to maintain membership with MCAG. Thank you. Thanks so much. A pleasure, absolutely a pleasure. It was a wonderful, beautiful drive.
Thank you.
It sure was. Sue, if you have any questions, you'll need any information ever. Fun day. Thank you.
Number three, history of Gypsy Moth Program, Jamie Housman, Jody.
So you'll notice that Jamie's not here. She's stuck in Ohio. And I do have a PowerPoint that she and I put together. That's where I get to say, hit it, Andy. No. So, Commissioner Asher can hit us some questions in regards to the Spongy Moth. The official new politically correct legal right name for our old friend, the Gypsy Moth. Be nicer or less destructive, but for more information, but I realize I have a great members that don't have a history. So with that being said, we'll give you a quick overview. Oops. And I have Julie Crick from MSUE and Daniel Marhoff, who is our Gypsy Moth Specialist, and then Greta, who is our administrative guru for Gypsy Moth as well. I don't know, you don't have a real official spongy title. So, and there's your copy, ma'am. First slide, please, sir. Well, obviously, we have had the Spongy Moth, original Gypsy Moth Program for quite some time in Ross Coman County. It actually began in the mid-1990s. The earliest files I can find are 1995. That was actually a cost share program between the federal government and the state government as gypsy moths were really recognized as this huge problem invasive, obviously, coming down from Pennsylvania, where they were released in the late 1800s because the gentleman thought they'd be a production of silk. And turns out, they were a lot worse than he thought. The county was only responsible for 30% of what the actual cost to spray was at that time. So the total program was run through somebody else, so we didn't have to have staff. We didn't do the counting, any of those things. It was administered by a combination of the Soil Conservation and MSUE. And stayed that way until the late 1990s.
Jody, if the total, if the county was only paying for 30%?
Correct.
Okay, and so now the county's paying 100%?
We now cover 100%. Yes, sir.
Okay. What was the program at that time? What was the total cost that was being?
I don't have any budgets that go back that far, simply because, A, those records are gone, and B, the state and the federal government paid for most of it. So I dug through the Gypsy Moth old files, but I would tell you at that time, gosh, when we look back to the spray box, they were spraying, let's say maybe 3,000 acres at a cost of 11 bucks an acre.
Back then, they sprayed a whole, the whole county at one time, too.
How successful was that program back then?
Probably about as successful as it is now. No more or no less. So next slide, please. So the program operates today very, very similar to the original scientific standards that were implemented by the state of Michigan and the USDA. Obviously, you are estimating next year's potential population by looking at those insect egg masses. You know, the little brownish-white things that you see on the tree. We literally use that to tell you where we think the caterpillars are going to hatch, which helps you concentrate then on where your spray box will be. Obviously, the biggest key to this is how many egg masses are in, in an acre, essentially. So that leads you to that physical survey. You've got to have people with feet on the ground, binoculars, walking properties, looking for those new masses, knowing the difference between old and new. Daniel and Julie, help me out. One of those little brown egg masses can release how many caterpillars? Okay. So what they look for is, it's a 1/40th of a hectacre plot is basically how they work it out. Before, this is what the plot size is going to be, and they go on and they use laptop, Excel data formulations to then plot this, put this into the geographic information system, and then use that information to formulate spray box. It is a common myth that the only information that goes into that is how many egg masses are on my property. There is a lot more that affects how they're going to spread and how effective suppression spray will be. So they also look at the type of canopy cover that you have, your mix of trees. Previous year's defoliation, is this, we have some areas that I will tell you are, there's an area in the south of St. Helen that is forever infested. Just seems to be that's a favorite place of everybody that comes down. A portion of that also is, what, what type of property ownership are we talking about? Because if you've got an acre of parcel that has 150 homes versus one person, one home, you get your biggest bang for your buck by spraying that one acre that has a lot more houses in it. So that's another portion that comes into that. Hold on just a second, please. So the other portion is the likelihood for blow-in. So essentially, what that means is, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the corners. I'll use Lyon Township is a great example. So Lyon Township has 27. The other side of 27, you have Crawford County. Crawford County does not spray. There's also a lot of forested land and state forested land. So therefore, you could spray on that corner of Lyon Township. But if there are moss that hatch on the other side of the road, they travel. And we find that in a lot of those corners where we bump up against our counties that do not spray. And through the years, that village has gone away, and now like Gladwin County is just back up, so they'll spray again this year. Crawford's village failed, so they're still not going to spray. And then additionally, you're just looking for those total number of plots in that head-to-acre type of parcel. So, yes, sir.
Yeah. You and I both attended the meeting, and there's something that after the meeting that just came back up in my mind. Is it the larvae that does the damage, or is it the actual moss?
It's the actual moss, when they eat all the little trees. Yeah.
That's, that's what I, that's the question I had. Okay, good. Thank you.
But those little caterpillars move too. They don't stick to the trees. Then obviously, your aerial application is going to be coordinated with, there's three major spray applicators. We have used Al's aerial spraying for the last decade that I'm aware of through competitive bids and being able to have that. But there's a whole process, FAA flight plans, calibrations, permitting processes through the state that have to be approved prior to them actually saying, yes, you can go ahead and spray. At that point, they are looking for, it's a late spring, and traditionally, we always seem to fall right around Memorial Day with people just love. But it has a lot to do with the growth. Well, it's all about the growth. But the tricky part is, you have to hit them in the second and star? First and second and star, which is their growth pattern. And you can't have too many leaves over top, or your spray doesn't filter down to where those little boppers are. And I think for the most part, you guys have done really well with that through the years. I know utilizing the same formulas, the same strategies. Daniel and Julie Crick in the back have worked with some pretty big experts that kind of started the original programming back in the day to every year, do reach out to them. Okay, what do you think? How are we looking? Here's what we're seeing. Daniel has, does the continuous monitoring to see, okay, how big are they getting? And if we panic, Al sprays. I mean, that's, but he's also been doing this for, well, since the inception. So he's been around, actually, all three of them have been around since the beginning of the inception. But one of the big questions that's always been asked is, how many acres, how many acres do we spray every single year? On the next slide, you can see kind of just a little graph of what we look at. So we went back and we grabbed data back to 2000. So you can see it's been a very even kind of pattern, high spray, low spray, as we've gone through. The biggest year that we have sprayed was actually in 2021. That was 25,987 acres that were sprayed. That was by far the largest. Next slide, please, sir.
Was that due to the amount of eggs and larvae that they found out in the field, or what?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that had to do, so in the lower years, you just didn't find as many, and we had so much in the fund pay for it. So in that particular year, we had the money and we found larvae. Okay.
Who asked how efficient it was in the very beginning?
Yes.
Point out that they're only doing private property, big properties, they're never, they're never going to be.
So they do, the state will spray, but that is their decision. They are approached and asked every year. They do not spray state lands. They have frequently sprayed the state parks in Higgins Lake. That is at their cost. We just charge them whatever the cost is to spray. We don't do anything. We actually do survey those properties every year for them. But they do not spray forested land. That is absolutely correct, nor will they spray forested land, nor do we have permission to spray forested land.
Don't do the state land, which is hungus.
It's going to filter over anyway. Yeah.
Correct. Yes. And you would be looking just kind of at a, at a side glance, and that's without the new, the new 2023 contract that's got the price in it. You'd be looking at over $5 million just to spray all of your private property in Ross Coman County, if you sprayed all of those acreages for that. Yes.
Really? Is that 20, 20-year, private?
Yes, ma'am, it does. Yes. Yep. Because that was another portion. Couple of changes that have been made, and I'll kind of swing back through this real quick and tail onto that. So the pattern of the high spray year has normally been followed by two or three low spray years. Our lowest years for spray, so I considered low being less than 2,000 acres. 2008, 2011, 13, 14, 16, 17, and 18 were all less than 2,000 acres. Actually, in 2016, that was the lowest year. No acres were actually sprayed. Nothing was sprayed in 2016 because there were no qualifying plots found by the director in charge at that time. So there wasn't even enough that we could, in her opinion, finagle to say, yeah, this qualifies. So 2016, absolutely no spray, which actually worked out, because then in 17, there was still less than 2,000 acres sprayed. So like I said, the highest spray year was in 2021. Followed quickly, cost of spray, as we're discussing what a program cost looks like. In 1998, that's the farthest information back I could find on what the contract was for per-acre spray. It was $10.88. $39.91 was the per-acre spray contract that we signed for 2023. And now moving forward, it is actually up to $40.91, I believe it was. Yeah, so it's gone up slightly more. So obviously, just the cost to operate and spray has increased intensely for that. Townships with the largest average sway box are Garrish, Richfield, and Lyon. If you go to the next slide. Daniel put together a plot that basically shows you from 2000 until 2022, we didn't have 2023 spray on there. The total acres that have been treated both by year and total acre treated by, broken down by township for every year. So what you'll notice is those areas that have, I'm going to call it the best trees, okay? And the largest population are the ones that have received the most bang for their buck, I guess is the way to put it. Garrish Township has received the first, the first highest amount. Once again, you've got a pretty highly populated area right around those lakes in which there is a lot of favored food for those little gypsy moth guys. So that's been your one. And then you'll see that your next highest trends towards Richfield. Richfield also has a higher population centered around the lakes in an area where they are highly favored. And then your final one is Lyon Township. Again, you flip it over to the other side of Higgins Lake. The trees haven't changed. The population hasn't changed. So you can see that trend as it goes. One of the things that we started to do with the 2020 spray blocks was we decided as a gypsy moth team, the Oversight Committee, which you now sit on, that we wanted more input from the public. What do you see? Communicate via Facebook. Send us some pictures, because staffing has become a huge issue, just like every other place. So the more input and the more information that we could get to focus where we're going, what we're looking for, you know, what people are seeing out there, the better the program should operate. Additionally, we just wanted more open communication about the program in general. It had always been very guarded, because if you had a home that's been infested by the caterpillars and you haven't been able to use your property for 30 days, your pool has to remain covered, your patio is ruined. We're not very happy when you call here, is the best way that I can put it. So being able to then have some control and some input into that and having a two-way communication has been a lot better than the practice prior to had really been kind of a, we'll take your complaint, we'll get back to you type of thing. Where now, it's just, it's much more customer-focused, because our residents are our customers. I mean, that's what it boils down to. So that's been working. At that time is when we also decided, hey, you know what? We've got this block, and this is the program that we use, and we have people that they're, they're mad. They're mad that they weren't included in this gypsy moth spray pack. And if they want to pay at the same cost that we do, we're willing to include them, even if we didn't include them based on our scientific data and research. based on our scientific data and research. Charlie, and I know your block's done it two years in a row, I think, right? Okay, but you did the year before. Yes, yep. So basically we just say, hey, if you either bump up to acreage that's already being sprayed or if you've got a plot that exceeds X amount of acreage, then we'll put you in for the spray block as well. And again, it's just at whatever the cost is, the 3991, 1098, whatever they happen to be charging that year for spray is what we charge per acre and then that goes into the total oversight of the program as well. It had been offered for the townships because we do, you know, we will spray township parks or county property if the egg masses are there, but if there were some additional sprays that they, they felt they wanted to contribute to. But for the most part, it has been private citizens. We didn't have as many this year as we did last year. Yeah, I want to say we only had like five or six individuals this year. I know we have a gentleman that owns a large acreage parcel of acreage over in Higgins Township that he will spray every single year, whether or not he sees gypsy moths or not. He's willing to pay for it.
Are those funds collected and billed or whatever? How does that work?
Oh, so super easy. So basically what it is, is Daniel and Julie have been working together. They go out, verify the site, we get the information, enter into a contract. The first year that we did it, we had them signing the contract between the township and turning the money into the township. And then the township said, no, thank you. We don't want to do this. So they come up here, the funds are deposited into your gypsy moth budget and you've got a budget in front of you. And as you go forward, there are some, some areas where gypsy moth tags, instructed contracted, spray, interest and investments. So it gets basically just budgeted into, deposited into the total payments. And then we spray. And then they have a verification of spray because aerial, the aerial spray applicator, you can actually trace their spray. That's part of, part of the requirements. So you can see where they turn the spray block on, turn the spray block off type of a thing. So now basically they come up here, Greta, for instance, this year, so she had the contracts come in. They reviewed the acreage, reviewed all the parcels. We asked them, every single parcel to be sprayed has to be included on there. Signed by the owner, signed by Gypsy Moth, signed by myself, treasurer's office deposits the money.
From what I understand, we've had a lot of money in the fund in the past and back in 21. It, it looks like we spent almost $880,000 in this last year. We spent 85 and now we're out of money. Is that, is that?
Pretty much, and I'm getting there. So the original funding, if you go to the next slide, please. So the original funding was a great match, like I said, between the state with us paying 30% of the total actual cost of spray. Our first suppression millage after the program ended was in 2000. It was for a quarter mill and it was for a 10-year period. Went up again in 2010, quarter mill, another 10-year period. The third millage was approved in 2020 and that was for half the millage as before, 0.1250. Four years, four-year millage instead of a 10-year millage because we were looking at traditional histories and a unprecedented fund balance of over a million dollars. Sitting in Gypsy Moth and the commissioners were getting very, very numerous angry phone calls from people about how you could still be running a program under that scientific data, but carry a 1.1 million dollar fund balance as it went on. Why will you continue to tax us if you have so much money in the bank? So looking at the trends of, hey, higher, too low, higher, too low. They banked on lessening the millage for a four-year period based on the spray funds and large fund balance and then made that decision to reduce it, knowing that if it doesn't work, it's only a four-year mill, basically. At that time, if you look historically back through the millage, that was a really good idea. And then 2021 hit. And I don't really know what to say after that. So basically in 2021, we had that huge year that Commissioner Ostrigan just mentioned. It was pretty much so doubled any other year that we have sprayed. And of that, private pay was only about $20,000. It was just an unprecedented year. In reviewing it, looking back, and this is where later if Julie wants to address kind of the last couple of years here. There have been some, some significant impacts in changes in behavior. If you, will you go to the next slide, please, Andy? So we pulled together the recent millage history. Jamie has all, had all of the L4029s back to 2013. So we grabbed the military rates and the total collected amounts for each. 2013, it was $312,025. 2023, which will be our collections for this year, moving for 2024's budget is 201,674.56. So you can see basically exactly what I said, it cut a little bit, cut almost in half, a little bit higher. X of volume went up, so we've got more. The next slide shows you what we pay for, basically. So the suppression program expenses include a part-time gypsy moth specialist, part-time secretarial support, a part-time seasonal survey crew. We've had anywhere from 12 total participants to three, depending on who applies and who comes back. It's a seasonal position, starts at the end of August, now, now starts at the end of August, runs until basically you're guaranteed through November, but they are out there until the weather just doesn't allow them to survey anymore. Where it's too dangerous to be tripping around on ice or heavy snows types of things, or you just can no longer see. I think you went almost up to New Year's. Yes. You know, pay is 13 to 16 dollars per hour. We do pay for any holidays that the buildings are closed. Returning staff receive the next level of pay. So if Commissioner Wolfson decided to survey this year and then return the year after, he would immediately be hired in at the returning rate of pay for the staff level. So.
What kind of people do, do that kind of a job? I'm just curious. Is it like students or?
Generally, it's a lot of retirees. Students is difficult because students go back to school around the time where we're.
We have, and this was one of the other changes we made in 2020. It used to be that the program was run where you could only work full-time. If you couldn't be available Monday through Friday from eight o'clock till 4:30, then you couldn't have a job. Daniel, Julie, myself and the rest of the oversight committee decided, yeah, we don't have the availability to be that picky. If you come and you say that you can survey every afternoon from lunchtime until 4:30, we'll take you. Like we would rather have a partial, partial participation, you know, part-time people surveying than no people surveying. And it's worked really well. The flexibility has worked well. We do allow people to start later than the date if they're willing to still continue the training. So we've had one or two people when the state park closes down that have come over and finished up the year during gypsy moth survey and they're a great, great resource. They love being outdoors. They don't, you know, they're, they're able to traverse the terrain, good eyesight, all the, the basic requirements.
Is that a job with benefits or is it like a contractual?
No, it's a part-time temporary position. Well, it's technically a full-time temporary position. Seasonal, yeah. So. Yep. So that is a portion of what is in there. So you can go through and you can see these are the general expenses that roll through. Obviously, I went through and I didn't average, our annual personnel and supplies budget is about 102,000. So nothing crazy and that is mostly, that is your staff. And then obviously they use the computers and data and those things have to be. And it sounds silly, but the car magnets we put on that people can recognize, that was a great idea, by the way. The vest that they wear that are high def that have the gypsy moth on them, binoculars, knee pads, tape measures, all of those little things they need to be more scientific and detailed and crawl around on their hands and knees. So if you see somebody and they're, they're under your deck, they are looking for gypsy moth, egg masses. If they have all that stuff on, if not, call 911.
What kind of permission?
Problem.
Kind of permission? Do they have to go ask for permission or how does that work?
So traditionally, because you are a resident and we have the spray program. Traditionally, it is been assumed that you do have permission to enter onto the property as a gypsy moth. They always knock. That is their first thing. They always knock when they approach. That's what they are trained to do is to see if anybody's home first. So you're not literally being a peeping tom while somebody's inside in the shower. Their big caveat is if it is private property and still marked private, so if I've got to sign up on my parcel that says no, no trespassing, they are not allowed to go onto that property. So we have instituted, we knew that before Daniel got here, but you were surveying still then. So probably about six years now, we literally simply made stickers that say, except gypsy moth survey crew. So that if people want them to survey, they can do no trespassing and put that sign out that lets our survey crew know. We have people that call that are on the no survey list permanently. They never, ever, ever want to. And that's kind of another, Mr. Weatherly was talking about state grounds. If you've got, and I can tell you kind of over where I live in Garrish Township, there was a gentleman who's got a 20-acre parcel. He is a no count. So we will never, ever, ever get data on that 20-acre parcel. Because he does not want his property surveyed, which harms your neighbors because then maybe there's not enough egg masses for a spray.
Has there ever been any incidents or any problems with our survey crew?
Oh, absolutely. I was not here at that time, so I don't have all the facts and the figures. Sheriff probably remembers more than I do. But there was an incident where somebody waved a gun, threatened to shoot. Oh, yeah, goshness. And I don't know all the facts and the things about it, but that's when the board at the time went through and they got a legal opinion on when you're allowed to enter. And that was the whole, when the whole private, if it's posted no trespassing, you don't trespass. Because clearly they are choosing not to have you there. So that's another reason they always go out in groups of two, aside from just being able to have a better oversight of the project. And why they're a little bit more blingy under gypsy moth notification of that. But yeah, that's a pretty bad one. We also have gone through some behavioral training with some of the individuals. We always go over, hey, if somebody tells you to leave, you don't argue and say that you're gypsy moth and you're allowed to be there. Cause that was a, that was a factor in this incident.
Person pointing the gun at you might not have read the legal opinion.
Yeah. But yes, so essentially, yeah, if somebody tells you to get off the property, you get off the property. You don't argue and wait for them to pull the gun on you and then call 911. And then you mark it down that those people clearly did not wish to be included in the spray count this year and move forward from there. So our largest variable cost is how much, how much the spray is. And that's been one of the budgeting challenges is traditionally, you're gonna go through and you don't, your budget is set and approved in November for the next calendar year, calendar fiscal year here, January through December. So in November, you don't know how much acreage you have to spray because you're still counting. So the fund balance was, was super nice for that, except for it just continued to build and build and build. We banged around scientifically, some different ideas of spraying throughout the years. Could you spray in small blocks? Could you just say every year I'll spray A, B, C, D, E, F, G? To make it more even as it goes through, but the answer is no, because if there's nothing there to spray, then you're just wasting your time. So there's been a lot of different ideas kicked around and it keeps coming back to this original scientific method out there. So I threw a quick figure together for 2020. So 88% of our total expenses, and that was actually, I think I made a mistake, that was actually 2021. 80% of our, 88% of the total expenses were spray. I have not found a season where expenses for spray were under, were under 50%. So except for the year that we didn't spray at all. So 2020 is when you saw that fund balance coming in at that all-time high of $1,115,883.32. We started this year with a current fund balance of $48,839. And really that was the unprecedented 2021, 2022 seasons. I will tell you that after 2021, I do not believe that any of the experts, and I'm not talking our local experts, I'm talking USDA, MSUE thought that the follow-up season was going to still be as bad. Because normally after that high of a season, you would see a total collapse of the population. So things, things they are changing is what we're, we're learning. So. Would you skip ahead, please, sir? This is just a quick graph for you to show you where your average, average annual budgets have been since 2013. So the first line actually represents our revenue that comes in. Obviously, the main point of our revenue is the gypsy moth millage that has gone through and generously passed by the residents. There's a little bit of now, we have this, they call it the LCSA payment, which is essentially what the state gives us in lieu of personal, personal tax. We get a little bit of interest that comes in from that. And now we have contracted spray for individuals as well. That, that would be included as you've gone through the years. Your second column is the actual expenses that have gone through. And then the ones that always look really big until you get to now are your fund balance that has been carried through for the program. So just kind of give you a quick, quick picture snapshot of that. And then for all of the commissioners, I also gave you an actual budget report that shows you the, the actual figures that come for that. So obviously when you look at 2018, 2019, and then heading into 2022 and 2021, that fund balance was, was pretty large as it went forward. So on the last slide, I wanted to give you guys kind of an idea. And Julian, Daniel and Julie, I'll probably have you guys come up and talk a little bit because you're, this is where your scientific smarts come in. Yay. Daniel doesn't like to talk unless it's door-to-door about gypsy moths. So obviously these spongy moths, they continue to be a large invasive pest. And our residents, as I know all of our commissioners have heard, they don't like them and they don't want them and they want government to do something about them. We have seen some different trends that are affecting the actual suppression program and its effectiveness. Weather trends have been, have been huge. And this is where Julie later will give you a little bit more info on that. And then those high spongy moth populations and those neighboring areas, those state land areas where there aren't suppression programs. That has a huge impact on us as well. I can't say the fancy name for the fungus. I could only type it out. But basically there's a fancy named fungus, but that actually attached the spongy moth larva that's in there. And you can actually see it. If you've ever seen on your tree, though, when they die, the caterpillars hang like a little J hook. They shrivel up and they die. Well, that's the fungus. They've eaten the fungus and the fungus kills them. We like the fungus. However, it's very limited in drought conditions. And obviously May through July is that big time when everybody's growing and the fungus needs to come out. And we've seen a lot less rainfall through the years. One of the other things that helps the fungus and that the larva I don't like are wet cold springs. We've also had very limited wet cold springs recently. And again, this will all go to Julie because this is where she's smarter than me. And then like I mentioned, our staffing for seasonal workers continues to be an obstacle. Just as a, for instance, this year, gosh, we've done the advertising. We've put it out and how many applications have we received? Zero. We call the townships. We put it in the newspapers. We do all the Facebook postings. We send letters to previous workers over the last several years asking if they'd like to return. And it's just not, it's just not been exactly, exactly helpful. We are lucky that the people that do return are excellent workers. They're experienced and they're willing to work through some worse weather than past, past historical people have. Wind is a big, wind is a big factor in whether we work or not. Your wind gusts that you come in at are.
Twenty-five miles an hour.
Yeah. So you get those November winds that come through and we tend to, that's about the time that we tend to see less stays that they're working because in November, those winds always seem to pick up with those storms. So that's another one. And then of course, the last thing is our, our current millage expires. This is the last year that we will collect. So we, we do need to have more funding and that will be then to the board of commissioners to determine what level of funding, if any, you would like to put onto the ballot. And then we can draft up, draft up any of the language for you to approve, so that could be placed on the next based on the 2024 elections for you. Julie, did you want to maybe address some of the changes we've seen in the gypsy moth? Spongy moth, gosh, I cannot do that.
While she's on her way up here. We have a, a proposal. I thought that Dave was working on something where we're gonna have a, a millage vote sooner or what exactly was, Rex knows a little bit about that too. Do we have anything that we were gonna be kicking through? Do we have anything that we were going to be kicking through sooner on? Not on gypsy moth, but on our general budget. Wasn't there some?
Well, that hasn't been decided by the board of commissioners yet.
That's what I'm asking about right now. Yeah, yeah. It was going to be done sooner and could this be put on that?
So the soonest that there is an election. Is with the presidential primary, correct? Okay, which is in.
So based on the most recent communication from the Bureau of Elections, they're planning for February 27th. But I'm still not sure if it's February 27th or March 12th. Plan for February 27th.
Well, I know we were going to be doing something on that. We've been talking about it for months now. I know Dave was going to be checking into that. About getting, you know, perhaps we could get the gypsy moth portion of. You know, the millage on there also. Dave, Rex, do you guys, I, I know we've been talking about it that that was going to be.
Elections.
Well, that's what, well, we have to get in planning to have that done at the time when people are going to vote. That's what I'm saying. I think that this is important enough to. We got nothing next year.
Right. After the survey, that would tell us a lot for this year.
Well, right now we have nothing in there at all. There's no, there's no millage at all.
We have money for 2024. What happens is we collect that winter millage, that winter millage actually funds the, the next year.
So 2023 winter. Not, not just the gypsy moth I'm talking about. I'm talking about there's other programs. We were going to do something to increase. To propose to the, to the public on our general, on our general budgeting. Isn't that correct, Rex? I mean.
Yeah, but that's in our next election. Yeah, another year.
But we can do that in February. That's what, that's what I'm saying.
Essentially, as soon as we know the date that the state chooses for the election. I can draft together the millage language, which is. Something we've all gotten used to doing now. And present that to the board of commissioners, but you'll have to make that decision on what the actual millage amount for the, for the collection would be. But we have to be able to know what the actual election date is. So you guys can approve it to be placed on that.
I think it's important that we get, get to the bottom line on that and, and get this included. So we, so we can start. We have nothing in the gypsy moth program right now. Nothing. Zero dollars.
Yeah, we do.
Get something on there. And, and I would propose also that we get a kickback up to where we, where, where it was back in 2019 as opposed to we're, we're getting half of that money in there right now. But I think it's important that we, we.
We've got enough to run 2024, but after that, there's no more. Yeah.
Enough right now.
Right, right now. Okay, but we don't have any kind of.
In 2024.
Many day fund or anything if we had, if we had to spend more money. We're down to zero. Basically. So we got enough for this 24, 2024, but if we don't get something. Going and we should be able to get it going in, in February, in the February election. That's what I'm saying. It's important that we get something. Going in the, in the February 2024 election, not wait till next November and then put it off again, put it off again. We keep putting things off. We need to get something nailed down.
If the board would like, we can put on for the next work session, a discussion of military for the gypsy moth.
Okay.
And then you guys could make that determination and then I can draft up language for you to approve as soon as we. Know when the presidential primary date is.
Along with the other stuff too.
You can only flood so much. If you put so much on there, you're not going to get nothing.
Is that your plan?
No, but I'm just telling you, if you put five, six items on there, we're not going to get nothing. I've seen it. Mark has seen it.
One of the things that I would. Be consider, first of all, we need to get the standard of what it passed last rate. How much we asking, what percentage we passed. Remember what percentage they passed. Some of that information, again.
I would tell you, if I had to guess, gypsy moth probably passed by over 90%.
You know, we need to know the rates of success because we put something on there too high and fail. We have to go back to the voters. Want to make sure that when we put something on the, on the. Ballot that it passes.
And it should be done as a separate line item. Am I correct? It's done as a separate line item. Then that, then that avoids any confusion of putting too much on the ballot.
One thing that I can say about the gypsy moth program, we talked about it earlier. Over the years, taking nothing away from the past, I've seen a huge increase in professionalism. Proactiveness of, of gypsy moth programs to the citizens. I think that's important to know. Thank you for doing your job so well. And I know how hard it is to get people. I know that there's been times where Bob Schneider and I. Would sit in the back room and go, we can't find anybody work for gypsy man. We did everything we possibly could. We still couldn't find people. Well, it's not like a trying, like of effort. It's just difficult to find qualified people to do that position.
Well, I'll say that everyone who's done it, from what I've heard. They enjoy it. They thoroughly enjoy the job and most of the folks who've stopped doing it have either moved on to some sort of full time employment. Or we're just no longer physically.
So I just wanted really quick, and then this will go into your discussion for the next work session, to see if. Julie and Daniel could give you just a very brief kind of oversight of what they are seeing field wise. And where you think we're, you know, new trends that we're seeing in spongy moth suppression, I guess.
Well, I think Jody did a really good job of giving a fantastic overview, especially of the history of the program. Now that the federal government and the state quit funding the program because the, the fungus was spread around, it was. Around the eastern United States. And remains active in the soil. But what that relies on is actually rain. And we all know our weather patterns are changing, getting rain and precipitation or concentrated events. Which doesn't lead to that cool wet spring that would activate the fungus. That would actually grow on the gypsy moth and caterpillars and consume them and kill them and lead to that population collapse. And so knowing that that, those trends may continue into the future. We can probably expect gypsy moth populations to remain high, especially in spotty situations. At this point here in Roscommon County, Crawford County and throughout the state, I've talked to some of the DNR folks. We're seeing a lot of the, the caterpillar populations heaviest on western exposures. And then sandy hills, which is where oaks. And so knowing those are the hottest and most stressed oaks, they are heavily impacted by spongy moth in that. They, they cause stress to the trees. There's a number of other things affecting the trees. And so we're losing some of those trees. In those areas and other areas, which is a natural part of our forest succession. Of course, we're cut over 120 years ago. We can expect changes to be happening right now. So I would say having a program in the end of the future for those spotty infestations. If the citizens vote to do that.
Oh, what would you like me to tell you? I would say, you know, in my observations around the county. I have seen, you know, from our, our big spray, what was that, 21? I would say the population has fallen off in some areas. So, you know, there's definitely been some level of improvement. But there, there are still hotspots out there. And, you know, it'll be interesting. I have been going around and following up with our residents who've called in and reached out to the program and. You know, seen the damage on their properties. And so I have a loose feel for where, where some of our trouble areas may be going into next year, but. It, it will truthfully be this fall survey that reveals what the overall trend is through the county.
One other point I'd like to make is that, you know, something that a lot of the residents didn't understand when we fielded the hundreds of phone calls from people. Is that this is a suppression program, not an eradication program. Suppression means that you're going to see them at a lower level. And in 2021, after the big spray, we were visiting properties where. Leaves were still green on the trees, but they were seeing maybe a couple of caterpillars and they were very upset. And so that was a success for the program in our eyes. And so getting that, you know, helping residents understand that it's suppression, that you're still going to see them. But hopefully you won't be 100% defoliated, which did occur a couple of times in the, in the highest altitude. Even in areas that was, but it's a suppression, not eradication.
So I, one of the other things that I just want to add really quick and, and it'll go into thought processes for villages and county needs. Julie Crick is a blessing to not only the gypsy moth program, but to our county and its residents in general. She was always kind of a sideline. For past directors of the gypsy moth program that would go in and kind of chat with her. But we, we were able to actually take on the expertise. In 2020, our director retired, left. And we kind of scrambled because it was literally right before we were supposed to start doing things. And MSUE said, hey, we could contract Julie to you. And use these resources through MSUE. That is not something when we've been able to do fully since, I mean, she was on the field, boots on ground. But Julie dedicates her own non-work time still to help the program. I would love to see us be able to get back to the point where we could have a full MSUE extension. Or MSU extension program involved not only in gypsy moth, but several other areas, but. So just to show you, essentially she devotes her spare time to help us out with this just because. She loves this stuff.
Thank you.
Meeting, and the meetings that I was at with you guys, very knowledgeable, really on top of everything. And I really appreciate all this work. And Jody, I, I appreciate everything that you've done on this because this is kind of like an ad hoc thing to, so we could get the information back out to the, my constituents. Because those are the ones that I'm hearing the complaints from. And the problem is, right now we've got no money in the program and we have to do something about that. It used to be twice what it was back in 2019. You can't, you can't do the same job for half the money. It just, it just can't be done. So we need to do something. About this in, in our next election that's coming up, you know, for the villages. Thank you very much.
I don't know if I could. Thank you. Number four, emergency management. Vanessa and Julie. Is it urgent, right? You're going to talk about now. Let's put it on the next.
We're just going to do another historical update.
Let's do it in two weeks. Thank you. Yeah, 2024 health insurance.
So I believe you all know Noel. Noel is our HR generalist. My better half, my right hand.
She enjoys talking in the public.
No. But more so than Daniel. But through the years. I would say that she's grown immensely to understand benefit products. And there's not a lot of things that we review when it comes to any type of benefit changes. That if she says that's a bad idea, I would disagree with. So I think the best thing to do is probably start with the fact that obviously I let you know that. We were looking at a huge increase from Priority Health based on our current brand. 17.9%. And we had asked them to see if they could get a quote from Blue Care Network. And then essentially how the game works. Is then they play that BCN quote against Priority Health. To see if Priority Health can, as Jennifer, our third party administrator likes to say, sharpen their pencil and come back. So Noel, do you want to just let them know what the new?
Sure. So essentially. Blue Care Network did come back with an offer. And before I talk about the offer that they came in, it was very, very comparable. It did have some pretty. Some significant plan changes and compared to what they were used to. However. It did allow Priority Health to reduce the 17.9% increase to 12.7% increase. So that is, if you look in the very first column on the handout I gave you. All the way down to the bottom, you'll see the 12.7%. The figure above that is 252,278. That's the dollar difference to what we're currently spending annually for our insurance. And that renewal is just as is, no changes. So 12, 12.7 is, is the highest that we have seen. Since we've been here nine and a half years ago. Very much better than 17.9, however, still, still a bit of a shocking number. So what they did do. Jennifer and her team over at Advantage Benefits, they did do a couple of different changes. We did look at a couple of other options, but they weren't. They really weren't reducing anything. So we didn't even put them in. However, what they came up with. For two different settings, really the only change on the second column, which we're calling option one. It is still an HMO, HRA with a $4,000, $8,000 deductible. With an 80%. Sorry, let me take that back. 20% embedded co-insurance maximum. Which would be essentially assumed into the HRA. What that's doing is. Can I explain that a little bit?
So basically what an embedded co-insurance says is, okay, after the deductibles met, you still have this amount of copay. On services that you have to pay before we'll kick in 100%. So that co-insurance is based on an 80/20 split model. Looking at risk assessment. Verifying, you know. Where we're at for a total compensation package. The idea is that you're, you're essentially doing a, a risk analysis and saying that the embedded co-insurance. Based on the total number of participants and the number of people that actually ever meet the deductible to start with. Will be a lower, will still be a lower cost than if we were to not change anything. And pay a full 12.7% increase. So if you made the change to this embedded co-insurance. You'd be looking at a 8.2% increase over what we currently pay now.
Right. And that, which is, I do want to say too. Saying co-insurance sometimes can get a little bit scary for participants because usually co-insurance means that there's a going to be responsibility for the employee. Because as of currently right now with our HRA, the deductibles are covered. That co-insurance is assumed into the HRA. They explained to us that embedded is a very specific word. That, that means that it's going to still be assumed as the responsibility of the HRA. Basically Jennifer and her team, they looked at our, a lot of our high using individuals. And what they potentially could have gone over on the HRA spend. And looked at it and there's only a few, very, very little. That would have potentially gone into ha, much higher numbers. And so they thought that for the costs. Seven, yeah. They thought for, for the cost savings that we could get for that in our premiums. That it, taking a little bit of a liability into co-insurance instead of raising deductibles. Was probably maybe a better financial step for us than just increasing deductibles right off the bat. And let's see, the second option after that really is the, the third column. The only difference between option one and option two columns is a slight increase in copays, three copays. The primary care visits are 15, specialists are 30, and urgent care are 45. An increase to five, 10 and 15. So primary care visit would be 20, specialist visits would be 40, and urgent care would be 60. And then also with the embedded co-insurance at the same amount would be 6.7% increase. So I will, I do like to point out that our area specifically rural, one of the. Challenges that we face is our, our providers for primary visits. They, I know myself, when I first moved, had extremely hard time finding any, a doctor who was accepting new patients. And then once I did find that person, then you can call if, say I'm sick or something, but. You may not be able to get in for several weeks to see your primary care physician. And so then, but if you still need medical care, where do you go? Maybe a walk-in. Well, maybe it's on the weekend and the walk-in isn't available. So you go to your urgent care. And that's essentially, so it would be, you know, a higher copay because it is a higher cost. However, $60, you know, versus 45, just something to keep in mind for our area that it would be an increase for. Because our urgent care visits are definitely higher than trend for other places, but they're right on trend for rural areas with us. but they're right on trend for rural areas with us.
So, so if you flip then to the second page, this shows us the Blue Care Network, they do not have an apples-for-apples plan to what we currently have for Priority Health. So it is quote on the closest. There are some positives and there are some not positives. And essentially what it looks like is there is no change in the deductible, the deductible is still the same. It is still a HMO, HRA product. This one is, you know, same total out-of-pockets, co-insurance a hundred percent after deductible with the deductible being paid by HRA. And the total cost of this plan, before I go into the positives and not positives, actually comes in at nine point two percent through Blue Care Network. And so that actually is just, let's see, so the difference to the current plan with no changes is two fifty-two, two seventy-eight. And the percent or the monetary difference for if you were to switch to the BCN is one eighty-seven, three sixty-three, which sounds great, but I'll throw a couple of things out there that made us a little nervous. So what we currently have is an option and I have, I'm union people, how are you back there? So I invited some of them to listen to this as we listen to it as well. So what we look at with the BCN option is there is a lot more gatekeeping with this as in you are, you're going back to that model where your primary care physician refers you for everything. So you're increasing your primary care visits. And this is, I think, where Noel was talking about, like, you try to get an appointment with your primary care provider and it takes you three weeks to get in to see somebody versus the current plan we have now. If you know that you broke your foot and you can't get into your primary care provider, you can go straight from the ER to an orthopedic versus ER, primary, orthopedic. So there's some of that that's in there. Positives, so let me get with the positives. The copays actually lessen for visits. So the copays actually go to fifteen dollars for a primary, fifteen for a specialist, and thirty dollars for, am I reading that right? That is super little.
No, the fifteen, we are currently fifteen.
Yeah.
The difference would be virtual visits are currently free with Priority Health. They go to a fifteen dollar copay. Urgent care would go to sixty. Then the emergency transportation was a hundred percent after deductible. And we did want to mention that while it can be rare, emergency transportation is super expensive. And maybe, so that would be, when I say a hundred percent after deductible, we are assuming the deductible, we are assuming that costs to the HRA.
And currently, it's a fifty dollar copay.
Correct. Emergency room would be one fifty after deductible as well.
Yeah, so there's no change.
So there's, yeah, no, that is a change after deductible. So we would still be assuming the emergency room visits with our HRA, which currently it's just a one fifty flat. Chiropractic visits would be medically necessarily, only medical necessity. So right now, you can go to the chiropractor for routine maintenance with Priority Health. This would be something that would be a pretty big change. I know that chiropractic care was one of the things that many, many of the employees expressed that they really enjoyed having that routine medical care of chiropractic covered. When we did the switch to Priority Health by, something like that. Time flies. Another major one, we currently, under durable medical equipment, under Priority Health, it is a hundred percent covered after deductible. It would go to fifty percent coverage, period, no deductible, nothing.
Why it would pay fifty percent out of your own pocket.
Internal medical equipment is anything that you can think of that is supplies that you would need for a medical reason. So like sleep machines and all of the materials that would go with that.
Everybody has a CPAP piece.
Correct. If you needed crutches or, you know, any of that sort of thing. So that was a pretty big change as well. The copays, I think what you were thinking, the copays for prescriptions actually do go down. For tier, that was the positive. The positive was the prescription copays. Right now, we're fifteen, fifty, or five tiers. It goes fifteen, fifty, eighty, and then twenty percent to a max of one fifty and three hundred.
That's what it is now?
That is what it is currently.
It's fifteen?
Yep.
Fifty maximum for the whole year?
No, that is per fill.
Per prescription?
Per prescription, yep. And depending on where your medicine falls into for the formulary, is where it goes. Yep, is what tier it falls into for the cost.
And that's what it is now, and it would go to, you're getting the bad answer.
What it would, it's okay, it'd go to fifteen, which is still the same for the tier one. Tier two would go down to thirty-five. Tier three would go down to sixty. Tier four would go down to eighty-five, and tier five would go down to eighty-five. It would also, right now, if you order, say, a ninety-day supply through mail order of your, of your script, it's two times the applicable copay. It would go to three times minus ten dollars. So just a little bit, then that would really just depend on how much your actual copay costs for that three months. But so it is, it would be, that is the positive of switching of, of the BCN.
So you lose chiropractic and you pick up some stuff.
Durable medical equipment, yeah, yeah, you, you lose that. So something I did just look at real quick too was that the difference between, so if you take the options that Priority Health gave us, or I'm sorry, that Jennifer gave us for Priority Health for changing a couple of things of the plan versus the current BCN, just straight offer, was that difference is to the option one, the, is about a twenty-four thousand dollar more for BCN. And then for option two would be about fifty-three, just shy of fifty-four thousand dollars more for BCN. They are going to, Jennifer and her team are going to give us quotes from BCN to match what Priority gave us for option one and option two as close as they possibly can.
We're not sure that BCN actually has that, if they've got those basically all-a-part things that you can add into. That's why the thing, the changes that you see in the proposal from BCN are the way that they are. It's because they don't necessarily have exactly what Priority offers.
All of these different plans are offered by Jennifer, right? So she came up with different plans or are they different companies?
We asked, we asked.
Yeah.
We asked. And it's very traditional that, say, they, they're the broker. And of course, you know, they have the insurance companies that they deal with. And what they do is, obviously, we've had Priority Health, so we get the renewal, but it's very traditional that what they'll, they'll go to other insurance companies to say, hey, this is what they're in the market for, what can you do better? To try to kind of get a comparative rate. And last year, we tried that and Blues did not want to quote us. So we were stuck with whatever Priority gave to us because those are really the two biggest carriers in our area. So this year just so happened to be that they wanted to quote us.
I think it's because I think we're finally desperate enough, we might come back.
And that is exactly what I think too. I think they're like, well, this is our opportunity to try, to try to get them because, yeah, they're, they're facing eighteen percent increase, so.
And how are we looking at our employees' payments in lieu of, does that affect too much of this? Because I know we have that certain percentage.
We actually have, that's the next thing on the third page, third page of your, of your insert. So, um, this could essentially, hang with me here for a sec. So, um, if you go back to the idea that, I know that you kind of introduced, that Jennifer told us was that they're essentially a business, Priority Health, all the insurance, they're a business and they need, they try to aim less than eighty percent of cost utilization. So that is dollar for dollar that we're spending in premium that then they are paying out. So as long as they're paying less than eighty cents for every dollar of premiums that we're putting, giving to them, they're, they're okay with that. The higher that goes, then the more they're spending than what they're bringing in from us in premiums. So essentially, they're losing money. And what we had done, which what she had said before, was that we were at a hundred and thirty-three percent utilization. So they're, they're, basically, they're spending thirty-three cents more for every dollar than that we're giving them. So they're, they're losing money and that's why they've quoted us so high. Now, what we did, we did a survey of all the employees to be able to get an idea, say, okay, who specifically, you know, would, would want to take in lieu if this were offered? So we gave all that information to Jennifer.
What we did just, who would be eligible?
Or who would be eligible, sorry. Who would have the option, yeah, sorry. And gave that to Jennifer and her team and they went through. And of course, they have all the information for claims, you know, that we're not privy to because all of that's protected with HIPAA. But then we're able to say, okay, this level, this coverage of person, this, this, all of these particular members who are eligible, if they were to drop, then what kind of impact would that have on our overall population of members included? And how the claims that they have had over the last, I don't remember exactly what they used, but the trend that they've had for the last few years, what kind of impact would that might actually have on our plan? So if you look at the figures that they put together for us, our adjusted loss ratio. So the total actual premium that they were taking in, seven hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars. If you subtract the cash in lieu premium that you would be losing by having people take cash in lieu, that'd be one forty-eight, eight sixty-eight, forty. Now, that's assuming everybody that was eligible also took it. But add back in the paid claims of one million, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars. Essentially, the claims over the pooling amount is twenty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven. What that's going to do is actually increase our utilization because you are now taking people who are probably fairly healthy, who are not using the insurance, and we're not removing high claim people, we're moving low claim people. By removing low claim people, our utilization is actually going to jump to a hundred and sixty-nine percent, which will actually, maybe not this time around, but in the next, the near future, years coming forward, is going to drastically change what our offers might be. That being said, I forget where I was going, I had something there and I lost it, sorry. I have that effect on me. I know. But at any rate, a hundred and sixty-nine percent, obviously, what, oh, that's what it was. Priority Health and Blue Care Network both have said that if our drop in participation, if we say we do, you guys choose which option we're going to go with, we do open enrollment and we have that option of cash in lieu at fifty percent of the premium. And if we have more than ten percent of our enrollees drop for cash in lieu, Priority Health and Blue Care Network will re-rate us immediately. And so we will be based on whatever the utilization is for the people that are in that one sixty-nine is where we are at right now. So that's assuming that everybody dropped.
Right, that's taking everybody that is eligible to drop that you think you're going to drop. And it'd be a hundred percent. So, yeah, if you, if you surveyed the people and asked them, would they do that? I mean, that's a critical issue, it's not, it's not if they can.
So the general, the general concept is, it depends. Because they don't know what their spouses are going to be offering because everybody else. Well, if our insurance is better still, then we're going to stay. But if my spouse's insurance or my significant other's insurance is better, then I'll go with them.
Right.
So they won't make that decision prior to, nor can we ask them to legally outside of an open enrollment period.
But you can get some kind of an idea.
So the general answer was maybe. Nobody will commit. And it's because a lot of the, the state changes insurance frequencies, what are the copays going into that? What's the cost savings for A versus B type of a situation?
But you can't assume that a hundred percent of we're going to drive. There's an old saying, you know, figures lie and liars use figures or something like that. I forget what the exact saying is, but, you know, you can't, you can't assume that a hundred percent of the people that are eligible or would most likely would do it, would do it. That might be only fifty percent.
So.
Which would change those figures dramatically and save the company some money.
If you look at the, that third paper, on the percent met for all of the members that were eligible, there are only three that are highlighted in white that are high claim. Fifty percent, fifty-eight percent, and fifty-four percent have met their HRA spend. The rest of them in gray are five, or sorry, there's one that's ten percent and the rest are five percent or less. Many of them are zero. So that would mean that you would need to have those three high claim members all bail, essentially, to be able to make that impact. If they didn't.
Go, go and cash in lieu.
Cash in, yes, correct. So that'd be three individuals. The rest of them are zero, they're not going to have any impact on, on saving us money. They're actually going to impact us on losing money. Because if a zero person, every person who's low drops out, then our utilization will go up. The only way that our utilization will go down is if those three high claiming members were to, to give a cash in lieu. So if that gives you a little bit of a better idea of, maybe we can't ask them if they're going to actually take it, but the numbers aren't in our favor.
The people that have high claims might have them for just one year also. So that, you know, you, you can't look at it as going to be the same thing every year.
Right.
And there's going to be people in there that were low utilization.
Right.
So they're going to have high claims this year.
Being a small group of employees, we can tell you that the people that are high utilizers are going to be high utilizers for a long time. That's, we, we know without knowing. Technically, I guess, is the best way to put it. Because they come to us with questions about their benefits. We know it's easy when you only have a hundred and fifty employees working on to do there. So that's not our decision, I guess. I would tell you that the recommendation from Priority Health, from Blue Care Network, from the Advantage Benefits, and then from Noel and myself, is with the fact that we have such a high current utilization rate and an aging population, which is only going to keep it, going to reopening cash in lieu is not a cost savings at this time. We are going to get younger again because people are going to retire. And at that time, this is going to save us money. So that is the general consensus of, of everyone that has had, been participating in the benefits conversation so far.
Yes, absolutely. And Jennifer and her team, they, they put extensive time into this. They called us many times to get clarification on things, to get updates. We discussed with them. And so they, they, it is, absolutely. And they put in, they're, they're very, very good at what, yes, we are very much blessed. And so they did, they did their due diligence on this for absolute positive. And they, they wanted to really pass on the fact that they, that to step forward with extreme caution on this just because they have, they see all of our information and they're in the business of, you know, of insurance and understand.
So with all of that, Mr. or Senator, did you have a question? Okay.
No, he doesn't.
Okay.
An amazing presentation. Amazing. I'll, I'll be totally unvarnished. My decision, your recommendation. You have the finger, you have the pulse of the finger, you're the pulse of the, of the county. Based on your recommendation and Judy's recommendation, that's probably how I'm going to go. So at the end of the day, the presentation was remarkable. What's your recommendation? Yeah, if you're, if you're not ready to give one now, I don't want to put you on the spot.
I think if we do this, it's two separate issues.
We can wait two weeks.
Your decision as a board of commissioners for cash in lieu is something that I personally think that you need to discuss and make a decision on. And honestly, you have to do it at the next meeting if you're going to offer it. It's got to be a one and done because then we will have to offer the open enrollment within three and a half weeks.
It will crunch.
Don't panic.
No, and I, and I'm not. I, I definitely.
Because we have to have those numbers for the budget.
And this is something that is not been put on a back burner. We actually got our renewal as fast as, literally as possible. And it was a special request to Blue Care Network and to Priority Health to do this. And they really actually fought it, but thankfully, we have awesome benefits and they were able to get that done for us. But in order to be able to do that, we, employees need enough time to be able to decide what they want to do. We need to offer that for them. And then it just takes a little bit of time, honestly, to be able to put all that information in, to be able to get you guys information.
I'll be happy to wait, I'll be happy to wait for your recommendation.
I think this is important enough that we should have a special meeting on it because it's, it, you know, we could talk for hours about this almost. I think it's something that, because of the time constraints, if we only have that much time, you know, I don't want to kick this into the next meeting and then find out, we got to have a special meeting. And I think we should have a special meeting. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, but to get all the facts out because everybody, you, you can't make an informed decision unless, you know, we're already an hour and a half into our work session.
Right, but you know what I'm going to do before I call a special meeting or anything, do a little more.
anything, do a little more, you know, I'm going to be comfortable, this team we have is totally awesome, and whatever you choose, that's your position here, and I'll go along with your position.
I'd like to remind everybody, cash-in-lou means we have to have that money, it's not free, a leprechaun does not give us that money, so that definitely enters into the equation, it's not just us trying to get a savings on this, which you're going to pay out over here.
But, but Rex, if you're not spending it, you have it. So it is, it does, it does appear, if you have a dollar and you only have to spend fifty cents to save a dollar.
Still comes out of the economy.
It's not money that we have, it's money that we would spend already anyway.
So you definitely are going to talk about this, and then if you need to call a special meeting, you're going to call a special meeting, right? Okay, so then the second portion of this is the current benefits, and what are, based on what we have in front of us right now, I'm going to caveat with any major changes that would affect, affect the employees, do have to be a sit-down conversation with our union and a union agreement for that. Hi, guys. So, for instance, we could do one and two under priority without negotiating with the union. If we switch to B C N and we have those changes for the chiropractor and the durable medical and the, we are transport, that's got to be a agreement with the union, and we are, we are in an opener phase, so the way that the contract is written is that if the total premium cost exceeds what the marketplace premium increases, then we have an opener for negotiations, the marketplace is only at three point seven percent, which I'm absolutely amazed at, because I haven't talked, I've talked to six other businesses, several their counties, and everybody is in double digits so far this year. So my gut instinct is, without seeing yet the second B C N, is to go with option one, is that what we were thinking?
I think so.
And at a maximum, option two for change to priority.
Right.
But you took it.
Open up negotiations when we got under these kind of time constraints, no, although we could even.
Right, right.
Well, another thing is, you went from seventeen percent to twelve percent. You did your homework and you did a good job. I'm comfortable with that.
So we would, this, if you, you guys will need to make that cash-in-lou determination, the actual plan, I can work at budgeting at the high end and then go from there. The flip side of that is too, that we're also going to have, there'll be a presentation, Noel has to come back and talk again.
You do.
I know. Somebody with you from your committee, so you're not all by yourself that time, because she wants to present the information that the Wage and Salary Committee, they need to present to you, the information and the statistics that wage and salary and their recommendations. I bet Vanessa would come with you.
Okay.
She'll already be here, right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And getting back to that other report too, I know you didn't do this all on your own, so you have, you know, or has a good staff behind her, so I appreciate all the work your staff did on that also.
Discussion.
I second it.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion. No discussion. Okay, thank you.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Astergren.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approval of the minutes for seven twenty-six of twenty-three regular meeting. I'll second it. Discussion. Michelle, roll call, please. Thank you.
Censor.
Yes.
Astergren.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Class A's claims and accounts.
Move to approve Class A bills in the amount of four hundred sixty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
We'll move this chair.
Okay.
Discussion. Please call roll.
Astergren.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Total claims and accounts.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Astergren.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Total claims and accounts.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Astergren.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Total claims and accounts.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Censor.
Yes.
Astergren.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Milburn.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Public comment. Is there any public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom? Number eight. Administrator Controller to report, Jody, you're on.
Well, good morning, almost afternoon today. Lawsuits, the only update on any of the cases currently is in regards to the opiate suit. Walgreens did put out a settlement agreement that, on advice of the attorney representatives, I have signed and entered into on behalf of the county. Same thing as I had stated before, essentially, as these are coming online and we are getting payments, they're going to go into one specific area until such time that we know what we have, and the board can make a decision to put some people together to, to do some real research on what is best for Ross Common County's usage before that. Special assessment projects, Higgins Lake hearing data set for September fifteenth, Lake St. Helen, the hearing date is December fifteenth. Holton Lake, there isn't currently a change in the status of where we're at, obviously there isn't approved special assessment. We had to reschedule the assessor meeting, the Denton Township Assessor was unable to attend the meeting that was scheduled for the seventh, we found that out at the last minute, as well as our equalization director was unable to attend, and obviously Denton has a large population, so that has been rescheduled for the beginning of next week, as soon as we know what can be done, what has to be contracted out for, then the firm that we are using, the engineering firm that we are using, will reach back out to us with that updated contract information, and they will begin the process of determining what apportionments would look like, and then meeting with the Board of Commissioners to finalize those apportionments. As far as Lake St. Helen is concerned, we will obviously, again, benefit from everything that we are learning from Holton Lake, in that we'll already be aware of what the local assessors can and cannot provide. So essentially, as soon as the special assessment district is formed for Lake St. Helen, the board can go out for engineering bids for design, and once we have that design back in both cases, that is where, once we have the, the estimated costs for the design that the board chooses on any of the projects, we can go for that bonding. So bonding, bonding comes last, basically, once you know what the project cost is actually going to be, based on how the law is written. Little bit of, a little bit of thoughts, I did on Higgins Lake, I did reach out to two separate engineering firms that are listed as the State of Michigan under the DM Safety as having appropriate approved civil engineering for lake-level control structures, and either one of them wants to touch Higgins Lake with a ten-foot pole. I did talk to Commissioner Astergren, and he suggested that I reach out to Chase Upier Soil Erosion and ask for some recommendations, and Chase is not comfortable providing a recommendation, because he also does not want to bring anyone into the mix of the Higgins Lake lawsuits and politics. So I have instead written letters to all of those engineering firms, asking them if they would still be interested in basically taking on a job to look at the scouring that is occurring on the Higgins Lake level control structure. That, also being said, I was contacted by Spicer's Group, who would actually like to come to the next board meeting, may have to be virtual, but Ron and Luke would like to address the concerns of the report that they did provide in regards to scouring to the entirety of the Board of Commissioners, so that everybody hears the same thing at the same time from them. So if that's something that the board as a whole would like, that is no cost to us, throw that out there, then I can make that happen, I can get that scheduled for you. So is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. At the next meeting.
Additionally, just kind of as an update, the original quote for that bill was thirteen hundred, and it came in at like eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, so it was a little less than we thought. Everything's low, St. Helen is one point eight inches below, Higgins is five inches below, point zero four, Holton is one point zero eight inches below. So speaking of Higgins, we've heard this from somebody for years, that the tool that we currently have on Higgins Lake does not allow us to reach legal level. There's been a lot of talk sideways, what project is it that Higgins could possibly have, it doesn't need to be replaced, it doesn't need to be. Personally, my recommendation is, the project from the Board of Commissioners needs to be, how do you take the current structure that you have and utilize that to update, improve, change in order to meet more closely the legal level of Higgins Lake? So that is, that is my request to you when it comes to it. I know that you did not want to do a project prior to the SAT actually being formed, I understand that completely. Heck, if you even want to ask the property owners for sixty-four thousand dollar donation to go ahead and start working on implementing that Spicer's, I tell you, go ahead and do that too, because our Board of Commissioners is going to have to do something with that structure. When you have everything closed up and no rain to supplement the groundwater that's being used around the lake and being put into the lake from the aquifers, something has to change. So, you know, and that is, that is a civil engineer, that is, you know, that is that portion of that. So there's my thoughts and my recommendations for it. Obviously, you have all heard or read in the Michigan Association of Counties that the governor has signed a great bill and counties are getting more revenue share. Just so you are aware, that's thirty-four thousand dollars for us on a ten-million-dollar budget. So, yes, we are getting more, but that is, that is what more equates to for us. Sue Fortune mentioned that there was a meeting scheduled with Isabella County regarding the new county materials management plan. Isabella has a huge, beautiful facility, recycling, waste management, they are, have a very professional setup, they have a director who oversees this, who is degreed and knowledgeable, and they would like to work with us as a possible cooperative planning for compliance with this. They have a lot more knowledge than we do, and the funding to implement land changes, if you're working together, is a lot more than if you try to do this by yourself. Commissioner Censor, unless you're in his emergency, will be attending tomorrow, Sue Fortune will be able to zoom in if I set that up, and then Commissioner Milburn, I was hoping you and/or your small counterpart together could come and participate as well. So, thank you. I know that recycling is near and dear to you, so, plus I feel like I always ask, Commissioner, I, I always ask you, so I asked somebody else this time. Speaking of asking you, so we had a very unusual situation occur, we have a drain district in Richfield Township, and in the area of a drain district, we had a resident who went for a walk down the road, stepped forward, and the ground fell beneath her. So there was a smaller sinkhole that occurred, it occurred on a weekend, contacted dispatch, EMS, Road Commission came out and put gravel into the road. So I heard from the resident on the Monday after the incident, and we're handling that appropriately, but our drain commissioner was out of town, and knowing how familiar our one commissioner is with the drain district, since he was the drain commissioner at the time, he did go out and check that out for me, and is working with our drain commissioner to assess the problem and determine if there is a solution that the county can make, or if it's a solution that the Road Commission will have to make. It is a private role, so there's not been a ton of road maintenance on there, but we are doing our due diligence to make sure that the resident is taken care of, and that if there is a problem, that we are slated to fix that, to make sure it doesn't happen again. We, I did have my bi-weekly SAT meeting, which in essence is everything that I just told you. They are putting together PowerPoint presentations to place online for both Richfield, for both Lake St. Helen and for Higgins Lake. Mailers will go out about the hearing on the fifteenth next week to all of the residents in the proposed Higgins Lake District. We just continue to look at parcels and field information as it comes in as a team. There's always something odd that comes up, there is a section in Lake St. Helen where they all have deeded access through a front parcel, but somehow the easement roads, which are thirty-three, actually were given parcel numbers, which is quite odd. So those have to be excluded, because it's, they're not buildable, they're only able to be used for ingress and egress to other properties, they're not even connected to the lake. So just add things like that that have come up as we've gone through. Obviously, Noel and I have spent some time banging our heads together and discussing and reviewing potential changes, health benefits, just having kind of generalized discussions on where do we go and what we wanted to look at recommending to the board. We also are looking at right now an update on the lake level page. After the last meeting, Commissioner Astergren and I sat down, he came up with some great ideas for some verbiage changes and some picture changes. I thought I'd be able to do it myself, I can't, not because I can't, I just don't have that day to book to it. So I have reached out to Civic Plus, and they have the information and are going to make some changes and send it over then for kind of like a final template for approval to put that up, but it'll streamline it better, I think it'll make it easier to understand, and it's just in general, I think it'll look better.
And you can have them contact me directly too, to save you some time, Jody, rather than communicate through three different people. It'll be a lot easier.
Thank you. Obviously, we always have FOIA reports, I did have two large ones, and I just kind of wanted to give you an idea, so you know sometimes where, where my days go. So the two Freedom of Information requests that I just completed in the last two weeks actually took a total of fourteen hours of my time. I traditionally do not parcel it off to Noel or to Julie, because obviously, they are hourly, but a lot of times when they have to do with lakes, Lake St. Helen was one, Higgins Lake is the other, the information that you're looking for is not something that anybody but somebody that's already familiar with those areas is going to know, but I always charge for the least person who, who could potentially do the job, be it Noel, Julie, I got to spend a lot of time in your office the other day, so that was fun. We do have a new lead for our medical examiner investigators, Darlene is the most familiar with this, David Second, but we employ medical examiner investigators, who are the ones that are actually contacted and called out on a death. They are our employees, we utilize a lead who's paid a little bit more to organize that and do most of the communication with the medical examiner's office in Genesee County that we utilize. Bill has stepped down, because when I asked him to do it three years ago, I told him it would only be for six months, and he told me he gave me three years, and Rick Dupon has stepped up, Rick is actually, he's a medic, but he's also the Director of Emergency Medicine over for Denton Township as well, and he has, was doing it in the past prior to Bill coming on, and is ready to come back on it. So I am finalizing an agreement for wage reimbursement for the District Court Administrator Oversight of Ogama County with their Administrator Controller. I am in need, we are in need, Greta's gone, or she would probably beg you, that we are looking at needing a very part-time temporary help in equalization, our GIS addressing is going to be a way for just an undetermined amount of time. is going to be a way for just an undetermined amount of time, and while they can pick up those duties, they have the capabilities, but only two and a half people, they don't have the time. So we'd be looking at something lowest scale pay basically to do. The last thing that I want to bring to your attention, beginning of the year, we had some issues in regards to our Michigan Indigent Defense Council. Um, we have issues again. They are very similar, and when I say our council, since Trace is sitting in the audience, I should say, the attorneys are doing a great job. That's not it. So there are all these standards that are set, and in one of the standards, it is in regards to being able to have an attorney, there must be an attorney available and present for any arraignments. Obviously, sometimes the people that are arraigned are coming in on their own. It's all scheduled. Other times, there's two or three that come in in a bunch, and maybe they're next door. So in this particular instance, there were two, and they were brought over in the same process that's always brought over. But the general, the general gist of it is that our regional, our regional director is, was in the audience, she at district court that day, she didn't like what she saw, she didn't like how it happened. I got a very lengthy email, kind of illuminating on the facts of where she felt we were non-compliant. And then at the end, she told me that we, I had until Monday, the fourteenth, to come up with a satisfiable solution, or she was reporting us as non-compliant to the state, and we will have to go down, and we will have to do, and things she said before, we'd have to do mediation at the cost of the county, and if the mediation isn't satisfactory, then she'll recommend that the state take us over, and so on, so forth, so on. Needless to say, this involves my judges, this involves my sheriff and my prosecutor. So in between all the other things, I have been investigating. I'm not finding what she's claiming. There may be areas of opportunity, but I am going to respond as nice as possible. Once I completed the investigation, we will do our best to address those concerns of individuals having one-on-one time with attorneys. This is why Trace here. Would you be okay if Trey, because Trey could probably give a little bit more insight into this than I can? Commissioner Russo? Okay. So I will follow up on that, and that was actually what we were going to say anyhow, is essentially just, people just need to ask if that's what's needed, so, or required. So that's everything I have.
I have some questions. Oh, in regards to your part on Higgins Lake and the project and so forth. It's apparent that we're headed to having an SAD on Higgins. I mean, I'm going to read a couple of letters here later on, and I'm opposed to it also, but it's apparent we're headed there. But I believe if we can have the tax fund and we, and we move forward, I'm going to bring the subject up again, on having the tax fund pay for Houghton, Lake Saint Helen, and Higgins Lake SADs, it's going to take a lot of pressure off of us as commissioners on getting this done, and then any projects as we move forward, that'd be done also, and it's my belief that we need a different dam on Higgins Lake. There's no doubt about it. You, we can fix, it went from having a perfect structure in December from our reporting engineers to a lot of problems that was described in the recent Spicer report. Nothing is going to be fixed on that. We can fix the scouring in the bottom, we can fix the logs, as long as we have a four-point seven-five foot wide open spillway on that lake. When none of our other lakes have a permanent spillway, you're never going to be able to reach legal level. So that needs to be changed, and the only way for us to do that is to go for another permit with Eagle. And a lot of this is tied up in this litigation that I'm currently involved in against this commission, and that has to, you know, move forward too. So we need that spillway fixed, and by being fixed, it needs to be reduced on to one foot, two foot, something in that range, that we can get an agreement from Eagle and the DNR and make everybody happy when none of the other lakes have spillways. There's no reason that we have to have a big, wide, open spillway on Higgins. They were never going to be able to reach legal level, no matter how many repairs we make to it, and there's currently double the amount of water going through that spillway than was originally proposed. So I just wanted to add that in and throw that in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator, thank you. Correspondents, excuse me, we have A through K.
Things that I want to talk to, well, the correspondence before you skip on that. Yeah, I received an email from Tony Medina, and this affects my district, being the city of Roscommon, and I'm just going to read that. "In an effort to help alleviate the downtown parking issue and promote commerce in the Village of Roscommon," which I think is important, "I'd like to suggest the placement of public parking signs, such as the one that he attached a photo to, near the location on Lake and Third Street, identifying newly, the newly paid parking lot in the parking lots on Third Street as available to public parking places." Now, I know we have employees parking, but we can make it limited for various times and so forth, because people coming in to shop in, in Roscommon on the weekends or during the weeknights would very much like to know, hey, can I park here? Okay? And he says, "It's brought to my attention that some people are unaware of the location of public parking spaces and believe some signs would assist both locals and visitors in finding available parking." Now, I don't know if this is a Road Commission issue, I don't know if it's a City of Roscommon issue, I don't know if it's a County Commissioner issue, whatever, but I'd like to look into this one.
The village.
So that's something that we should probably take up with the village, and, and I should contact them, or he should contact them, or is this on his agenda? I have no idea, but I, I think that it's important that that be handled.
Just to give you a little political feedback, there is quite the contentious between Mr. Medina and parking in general. And he, he's a very active citizen, very intelligent, passionate about the Village of Roscommon, lives here, grew up here.
It'd be that he's correct, too.
And he could be. So I, having seen that email, actually kind of went out and peeked around. There isn't a darn good spot to put that kind of a sign where somebody's going to actually notice it. But that being said, there is this white sign built, close to the stop sign, that used to have some information on it. It's very nice, very rustic looking, that you could easily put, well, but parking available with an arrow that points across the street. I don't think that would be too costly, and as long as...
Have you handled the village anyway, you're saying? Or should it be, or not?
It should be, but we're more than happy to do it, I think, if that's the easiest solution to the...
I mean, it's such a small little thing. I mean, you know, it's...
But then it's not costly. It's just getting lettering placed on, on a pre-existing.
Yeah, because...
Because there's already so many signs in that area out there.
A lot of people lose their time on the weekends, and a lot of shops stay open on the weekends. So I think that'd be important. There's also another email that I received that I want to read into the record. I don't know if it's on the correspondence or not, but it's from Mary Jo, Gary's Township, Mary Jo Eppi, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't know if I got her name right, but she's a trustee over in Gary's Township, and she's writing this. "I'm writing to let you know that the Gary's Township meeting this morning, August third, two thousand twenty-three, we voted to approve resolution number two oh two three oh eight oh three dash sixteen, which is titled Resolution of the Gary Township Board opposing a creation, the creation of a special assessment district at Higgins Lake. We have been in many conversations amongst ourselves about this SAD proposal since the beginning of June. Several of us have attempted to get answers for the reasons, including Higgins Lake in the SAD, especially since we do not have a project needed for Higgins Lake Cut River Dam, but we were unsuccessful. We understand that the reason for both Houghton and Lake Saint Helen needing help with funds for their dams, but this is not the case for our lake. Gary's Township Board members have been flooded with phone calls, emails, and in-person questions, and it's why we are allowing this SAD to happen on Higgins Lake, and I personally am not okay with this going forward without letting the Board of Commissioners know that we are not in agreement with including Higgins Lake. I did not want this to get dropped on you without you knowing this first. And I am a team player, as in, I would love to see us all work together for the betterment, betterment of our county. It saddens me to have to publicly oppose what your board is trying to do, but I see no other choice since asking three of the commissioners to reconsider and eliminate Higgins Lake from the SAD, and pretty mu, and was pretty much told, no. I'm not willing to let this unreasonable taxation happen without letting you know it's not right. I was elected to represent the residents of Garrish, and I strive to do the best I can do so. I am very much saddened that our board has not approached, was not approached by your board to get our opinions on this before you began this process, since the greater portion of Higgins Lake is in our township. I hope we can all learn from this, and in the future, work together to make Roscommon County an even better place to live than it already is. I appreciate the work you do. I know it's not an easy task. And like I said before, I, I see the SAD going forward. I, I know I can't stop it, but I feel very, very strongly that we need to get the assurances, the, the formation of the SAD, and I think the expenses are now over a hundred and twenty grand for Higgins Lake with legal fees and engineering fees, to get that paid for with the tax fund. And then we, as we move forward with the project for a new dam, those expenses can be passed on, but until then, you know, that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Monthly department reports, we have a animal control, the animal shelter, visitors, do I think, visitors out there? Unfinished new business, a lake level management committee report, which...
We did interviews last week, and we've selected a delegated authority, Chase Sepke, and we're going to offer him a job. And it's going to be twenty-five dollars an hour. There's going to be six-month probationary period. And this will be for the Houghton Lake delegated authority. Once he decides he'll accept the job, then we need the board to pass a resolution making him the delegate authority for that lake.
That'll be in two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Any questions on that?
Obviously, he possesses a hydrology and...
Yes, he does. We took that into account.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Will you clarify for me something? You said just Houghton Lake? When will this, when will this person take the other lakes away from me? Because that would be nice.
When we can put together funding for it.
So when the SADs are created?
Yes. Plan, yes.
Okay, thank you.
E, engineering Higgins Lake scouring, we already talked about that.
I have some more unfinished business.
Okay.
Um, I think it's time to move forward with the headway restoration. Get it on the ballot. Don't know how we want to proceed on that, whether we want to have a committee looking into options or what we want to do, but it's time to proceed on that.
You know, I agree with you, Rex, a hundred percent, you know? I worked with a lot of department heads. We went around last time to Township with the sheriff, Vance, there was, you were involved, weren't you? You know, different townships, all from town meetings. Start coming up with stuff. I'm for it a hundred percent. What we could do to get the word out.
What's the process? Jody, what is the process to get everything?
We just have to put something on the ballot next time it comes up.
Which will be in February.
Yeah.
So potentially, you guys would just be approving that that goes out there, but as far as...
Windows are wording have to be on the show, excuse me.
We don't know yet, because we don't know when the first election is, correct?
It's twelve, excuse me, it's twelve weeks before the date of the election.
But isn't there, aren't there things that we can get going on right now in anticipation of that, and then?
We can...
Have it ready for example, on the spongy moss.
Yeah, we can, earlier, but let's come up with the next couple of weeks. What are we going to do to get out there to the folks? You like your career?
You do need to come up with a plan of action, and education is, education is the key word, obviously, without a political action campaign, which would be totally separate entity from the Board of Commissioners or employees. All you can do is provide educational materials. If there is a group that wanted to form and create a political action campaign, donations, et cetera, they could then do signs, et cetera, those types of things, but we are limited under, under government to...
Yeah, we can.
...information.
Is that our chair's responsibility to come up with a plan of action?
It's, it's not. It's whomever would like to take the lead, and...
Came up with it last time, but out of three or four town hall meetings, we only had five people. That's a...
Okay, but we have a... Up with a plan of action. Jody mentioned a plan of action.
You know, but I need everyone's output. What do you want to do this time to get out to the residents? Bring that back to me in the next couple of weeks, everybody.
First thing we have to do is commit to having wording put on the ballot for this, and then the education follows. Because of the time restraints to have the wording...
And then, and then we get it on the ballot, so is that...
Well, the first thing we have to do is commit to putting it on the ballot.
That's no brainer.
I don't know if we want somebody in charge of that project, or what?
You know, last time we advertised it real heavy. It was on our website. A lot of department heads attended. But like I said, out of three or four town hall meetings, we only had five residents. We had two of the meetings, we had zero. We had like three, four people at Richfield, and one person from Denton.
Maybe we should have one.
Nobody had Garrish.
Maybe we should have one town hall meeting all right here in the, in the commissioner's office for all the townships to show up. Maybe that would work. I mean, that would work better if only that many people showed up. Maybe that would be a better way to do it.
We can, and we advertised it really heavy. Take care.
Mark had a question. I know he's...
But Garrish, I didn't have nobody.
At least one way. One thing that I left out in my last, when I talked to Rex, that the position be non-political also.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I think it's important, because I kind of went back here a second ago. I looked at my notes. I make sure that position is... We don't need to get mired down into both those type of issues. So I appreciate you and Darlene's. Every time I came here last week, you guys were always hot in ba, hot in battle, so I appreciate your time and...
Yeah, in the next couple of weeks, each commissioner come to me with a different idea of how we can reach out to the residents.
Regarding that, Mr. Chair, obviously, we spent a lot of time in, a lot of evening hours. Do the same thing, we're going to get the same results. Maybe would be a good idea, I came up with a suggestion, have something here. My, my feeling is that we'll probably have the same results, however, it's sure worth giving it a shot.
Oh, yeah, I agree a hundred percent.
Recommendation.
I'm going to be really blunt and honest. We started too late last time. There weren't enough, the townships are great, but the people don't go to the township meetings unless there's a really big issue, and then they're not paying attention anyhow. And I, I'll be honest, Commissioner Aschegun, like, you're good at this stuff. Like, you're a good talker. You know how to get to people. You know how to communicate. So I, like, would love some ideas. I, I think you'll have better ideas as somebody fresh coming in, because we did miss vote. We started too late, and we were not as exacting in getting the information to where it needed to go for the voters. So, yeah, having new people with new ideas is wonderful.
Yeah, bring ideas in two weeks. Oceans and resolutions.
Before we go by that, we've got engineer, is there supposed to be an engineer here to talk about the Higgins Lake scouring?
Oh, Jody already covered it.
The general, nobody will tell me anything, so I had to send them all letters, and Spicer's is willing to come and address at the next board meeting.
At the next meeting.
Number one, move to adopt resolution number two zero two three dash zero eight dash zero one, Child Care Fund two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four budget adoption. Whereas the Roscommon County Thirty-Fourth Circuit Court Family Division has prepared the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four State Child Care Fund Annual Plan and Budget, and whereas programming has been classified as, but not limited... And whereas programming has been classified as, but not limited to, family foster care, institutional care, in-home care, and foster care during the period of appeal after parental release. And whereas, as the anticipated net expenditures are one million, four hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents, of which eligible expenditures will be reimbursed by the state at fifty percent. Need to change that because the legislation changed that she's doing seventy-five percent in the budget. No. Oh, that's next year anyway, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, sorry. And whereas these expenditures will return projected state reimbursement revenues of seven hundred, five thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-four cents. And whereas, to receive state funding, all expenditures for programs are required to be included in the state childcare fund budget. And whereas expenditures are aligned with Roscommon County's two thousand twenty-three adopted budget and the two thousand twenty-four budget currently under development. And whereas, to receive reimbursement for expenditures, the state childcare fund budget requires the authorizing signatures of the Chief Judge of the Family Division, the Director of the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Chair of the Board of Commissioners. And whereas, this matter has been reviewed by the County Administrator Controller's Office and the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners. Now therefore be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes the submission of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four State Childcare Fund Budget Summary to the State of Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Office of Federal Compliance Childcare Fund Monitoring Unit for total estimated expenditures of one million, four hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents for the period of October one, two thousand twenty-three to September thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners takes the following actions contingent upon receipt of the grant award in conformity with the grant application. Number one, authorizing the Administrator Controller to sign the notice of grant award. Number two, amending the budget as attached here to and made a part here of as part of the DHHS Form two zero nine one. Number three, authorizing the Administrator Controller to sign the delegate contracts in conformity with the application.
Thank you, Michelle. Second, I need discussion. After you drink, clear call roll.
Wilson.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Censor. Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Thank you. Motion number two.
Move to approve the lake level manager job description as presented to the board on seven twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three.
So move. Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion number three, please.
Move to approve permit fees, part ninety-one soil erosion and sedimentation control to now include the additional permits pulled after the construction has started are subject to double fines, or double fees.
Excuse me. Does this need to be retroactive?
No.
July twenty-six?
I think it would be beneficial because he's got several out there that are not pulling.
But we haven't really advertised or discussed that prior, so I don't know if we can get away with it.
No, we talked about this last meeting.
Right, but.
And we wanted to take action on it then, but.
We couldn't.
I moved to make it retroactive.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I was the one that approved the budget, but I feel comfortable with Mr. Wilson's recommendation. We go with his recommendation.
So go back and, yeah, and it's not there. You want to put a date in there or?
July twenty-six.
It's better for.
So you wanted to read retroactive to seven.
Twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three.
It's cleaner with the dates in it.
Yeah, we would have to.
Make it effective. Don't say retroactive.
Yeah, I agree with Eric. Just effective, no retroactive.
Yeah, but we're voting on it today, so we can't put effective.
You're right, too.
We gotta go.
I don't know.
Retroactive, yeah.
It has to be that way.
Be clean and clear.
Okay, so what am I putting?
Everything you did, but. Yeah. Thank you.
As long as it's legal.
Yeah, that's.
Effective date.
Okay. Move to approve permit fees, part ninety-one soil erosion and sedimentation control to now include the additional permits pulled after the construction has started are subject to double fees, retroactive to seven twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three.
I do have a question though, Mr. Chair. We're getting kind of technical. Has anybody, has anybody taken a permit out in the last two weeks? Because if somebody has, it's not fair to them to get double fee.
Well, if they've taken a permit out, this won't affect them.
Or they missed a fee. I'm sorry. I misspoke. But if they, if they.
They have so long to do it, so.
So if somebody's missed a fee, and I wouldn't want them to be double fined.
It's been posted on the website.
And what happens is they go and they do something illegal and they don't.
I understand the kicker is though, if somebody's done it, we don't want to have to go back to and say, you know what I'm saying? If you've missed a fee.
They missed their filing. In other words, they went and did it without permission in the first place.
They would get, yeah.
They're gonna get nailed.
Yeah, they went and did it without permission.
Yep, seven twenty-six.
Commissioner Milburn, I do know that our soil erosion officer has contacted via letter all of the people that are currently been found to, and a lot of these people came as a part of our State of Michigan audit. And this recommendation actually came from the State of Michigan.
Oh, no.
He has contacted those people and said, you're doing work without a permit, and if you don't come and get a permit, you're going to get charged double if I've got to find you.
Oh, no, I.
They have received their warnings appropriately.
I just think maybe, maybe we should consider upon rethinking this, just leave it the way it is instead of saying retroactive. Just leave it the way it is.
If they already sent letters out, then let's do it. If everyone's received.
I've been agreeing with the original motion, but I don't want to mess with.
Okay. Well, someone has to support this, and then we should have went in discussion. We're going backwards. Okay.
I don't need to have a motion.
Oh, I thought the way you read it was the motion.
The motion.
I don't make the motions. I just read them.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. We're doing things backwards.
I saw move.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion. Now we're doing.
Original motion, but I feel uncomfortable about going back two weeks.
Okay, any other discussion? Clear call roll.
Censor.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Milburn.
No.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Okay. Number four.
Move to authorize nine-one-one director Vance Stringham to expend up to one hundred thirty thousand, two hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty cents for the purchase of an IP recording system from Equiture. This includes the equipment costs of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and a yearly maintenance for two, for years two through five, eight thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars and twenty cents per year.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Clerk, please call roll.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number five, please.
Move to authorize Roscommon County United Way to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars of previously awarded ERP funds to be utilized for offsetting food insecurities in Roscommon County.
Again.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Russo.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Ostergrin.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Committee reports.
I have none. Is he? I had to vote my township immediately, as we do. The kicker was today. Had a really good time at the night out with the Sheriff's Department. Vance was there. The gang was there. And I want to compliment the Sheriff's Department. In an incident, my township, or not my township, in the township that I represent, Roscommon, and I had an individual needs some help, and the Sheriff's Department acted accordingly, giving some feedback. Publicly thanked them for their quick response. And also, I'm gonna talk with the economic development, or that, with Dorian Isis, that I'm, I want to make sure that we can get a stronger representation on environmental issues in the sector area. Good, Mr. Chair.
Welcome.
Um, the only one that I think the only level management committee with Commissioner. On August first. Third. Out in Michigan, we were both canceled in July.
Not much goes on in July, Rex.
The only thing I can say is the committee for fishing for catfish is slow.
Agenda meeting for myself and claims and accounts. Public comment. Do I have any public comment? Is there anybody in Zoom? Sure. Please put your mic on, identify yourself.
My name's Greg Seenack. I'm a resident of Garrish Township. So as I understand, we're, we're going to create a position and appoint someone to be the delegated authority. Who's very qualified and has a lot of understanding of the issues that are involved with things about the dams. And I kind of echo Jody's question of how soon could we get this person involved with all the lakes rather than just with Houghton Lake? And it seems to me that there's an awful lot of question and comment about the things that are going on. Dams, and I would think that this person's involvement as soon as possible would be something that we benefit. So I'd like to ask that that be revisited, and for whatever the reasons are, that might be to wait until the special assessment districts are created before the delegated authority be named in Higgins Lake and Lake St. Helen. I'd like to suggest that that be done as quickly as possible. So that's my entire comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
So I just wanted to give the board an update and the general public that we got information from the Bureau of Elections earlier this week. And I actually have a meeting with the Township Clerks on Monday, the fourteenth, regarding the early voting. So we have to create a plan. So whether each municipality is going to host their own early voting, if they're going to contract with neighboring townships to host it, or if the county is going to host any of it. Those plans are going to have to be approved and sent into the state. So, and as I mentioned, that's where I came up with the February twenty-seventh date is all of that information. They provided us our deadlines for that based on a February twenty-seventh election date. So for twelve weeks prior to that, that date is December fifth. So keep that in mind in your planning as far as villages and such.
Morning, everybody. I'm Ken O'Rourke, Garrish Township resident. I just had a couple of comments, I guess. The annual payment discussion about whether you can make money, lose money, whatever you're going to do, because your rate, your experience base, because you're such a large group. So they can look into the records and see how much you're spending per employee and which ones are eligible to take what, and that's sort of a complicated part of it. But I believe that the road commission, I'm sure it's still there, when I ran the road commission, we offered at the beginning, one-third of whatever you were eligible for instead of one-half. If you were eligible as a single, well, you couldn't be. You'd have to opt out. Have to have insurance. But as a double or a family, those would be different rates, and those people would make different amounts. And then we had a long discussion with union and non-union employees. And we basically said, we just want to make a fixed rate payment, that way it doesn't change every year. The amount that you're going to get is started out at basically one-third. So maybe you're going to get two hundred and fifty dollars a month. If you're going to get four hundred dollars a month to not take the insurance, but that locks in the amount that you're going to pay out. And it's not a ebb and flow kind of thing on a yearly basis. If you get these nineteen percent, twenty percent, whatever the increases are. And then you have to suffer through all of that, but you may be able to actually make this work as a savings that you can apply to some other use during the year if you just lock in the amount. And I don't know how you got fixated on one half, but it seems that all the meetings I've been at and heard is just one half. It doesn't have to be one half. It can be the number you decide to vote on, and that should be part of your discussion, is how much are you willing to offer to get people to not take a redundant insurance, basically, to pay their cost on what are the other part of the insurance doesn't cover? But I think that's where you get sort of into that discussion is what are they gonna, what are they paying out of pocket by not having two insurance companies to go to to ask for benefits? So just a thought, we started with a lower number, and I think everybody was satisfied with that number. And I think they're probably still at that number. And then about the Headley restoration. I think the failing part is just my opinion, failing part of that around where it didn't pass last time was just that we didn't see that taxpayers didn't see a plan for the dollar amount that you were going to spend. Not that you didn't go out and try to communicate that to people, but people wanted to know, what are you going to do with the money? And for the last year or so, we've been talking an awful lot about cuts you've had to make in your budget just to run the county and to pay your employees, pay your benefits, do everything. If people get fixated that that's what you're going to do with the money, you're probably going to go down in flames. Again, it's just my opinion. They have to know that what you're going to do with it. When we, we put the program together to pass this countywide millage for roads, which was never had here. We spent all of our time fixating on what the money was going to be spent on, what each township was going to get. How many roads could we fix? What kind of maintenance programs we could put in place? Not the cuts we had made and how we were going to replace that money, because that's what Headley was supposed to be doing. Was supposed to keep you in check from getting these astronomical amounts and from the tax base going up. You know, with fifteen percent or whatever is going up, you were held to what that inflationary mark was. So if you're going to redo that, I think the focus should not be on anything other than what do we plan to do with the money? And I think each commissioner ought to come back here and say, I would think that we want to spend, if it's a million dollars, we want to spend a hundred thousand dollars to put this program in place. Or some of it's probably going to be to replace programs, or how do we get the gypsy moth money back up? I did the rough math as you were talking about the gypsy moth. You're sort of fixed right now at a couple thousand acre, or a couple hundred acres a year is what you have in the budget right now.
Yeah.
A couple hundred acres max because of your other expenses to run the program. You're not going to be effective at all. You might as well not do it for a couple hundred acres. But if you can double that amount back to what it was, then do the math, but that still holds you to maybe seven hundred acres, I think, seven thousand acres. I'm not sure the number. But do that math and say, you know, what, what are we really looking at here? Are we going to be effective, even if we double the millage? Take it back to what the millage originally was, without that huge fund balance that developed from not doing spraying for multiple years. I think they're gonna be bad. So, just my opinion. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Charlene Cornell from Garrish Township. I just have a question. Commissioner Russo, when we met with you with the HLP OA, Higgins Lake Land Conservancy, you were invited us to be part of a committee or invited a lake representative to be part of the committee. Is, and I know you can't answer now, but next time, could you please let the public know? Is that the lake level management committee that we were talking about in your office and who all is on it? I know Commissioner Censor and Commissioner Wilson are both on it, but I, if that's the committee you're talking about, you don't have any representatives from anyplace else. So I'm just curious on that.
I'll get with you after. Thank you.
And Jody, I'm impressed by all the work that you do and have done and reported today. It's very helpful because you tell us what's happening. But my favorite quote that you've said today, and I hope you all keep this in mind when you're talking about the sad now, especially for Higgins Lake. But my favorite quote that you said today, and I hope you all keep this in mind when you're talking about the sad now, especially for Higgins Lake, because that's where I am. You said, quote, "Our residents are our customers," end of quote. We are your customers, and we have made it emphatically clear that the way that the sad is going forward in Higgins Lake with no project is not what your customers want.
Thank you. Is there anybody? Last chance for Zoom, Ren.
I, I have public comment. You know, sit around at the campfire and have a kumbaya meeting to, to everybody's getting along so well. Because I agree with a couple of the comments that Timo Rourke made. One, having to do with the percentages is something that we should talk about, and I think we need to have a special meeting on the insurance situation. Maybe it's forty percent, maybe it's thirty percent or whatever, but if we can save the county some money, I think it's something that we really need to look at, and those numbers will change about the number of people wanting to join in on it. If we do, because if we're paying two thousand, two thousand a month, we'll say, for an employee and their family. And they would take thirty percent of that. That's a thirteen hundred dollar savings to us. Now, not as many people will do it. Maybe that, maybe we, the numbers, we thought we were going to hit a sweet spot. We have to find that sweet spot because it will save the county some money. And I also agree with Timo Rourke on the gypsy moth situation. We need to really get on top of that and go back to at least where we were before. And that needs to be handled in the situation, in the upcoming February election also. Thank you.
With that being said, I'll take a motion for a judgment. Second, all in favor? Aye, thank you.